I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're viewing the minutes of March sixth.
So.
It's a motion every second. Any further discussion? See none, call us in favor, everybody? Members reports.
Um, my only thing is just the concern of rain or snow that's coming, you still have that buildup of all the sand on all the river room. I just want to make sure that we're kind of on the state or we have a backup plan for that, so people can have a lot of issues that could be involved.
Well, and I don't mean, so we'll jump right into the town in this report. Okay, um, the newsletter, the next edition, this is hopefully going to be the first one, it's going to be nailed every door to our nail. Um, so if everything goes well, that draft is going to be finalized within a month, well, first, second week of April. Um, we are looking for contributors still, I've got, I think it's probably going to be an eight or ten page newsletter, um, but we'll see what other final submissions coming in for, uh, whether it's general interest piece to local history, whether it's department business or it's a nonprofit. Then we're willing to entertain all that space permitted, um, and we'll see how that goes and what the reception is.
I have one recommendation of that one, um, I've seen a lot of things online about just questions about the use of the rail trail, what's acceptable, what isn't, like horses go, can, that might be a good spot for, you know, just an update from the sportsman's club that would transfer stuff, just so where that's going on to every household that maybe dispels some of the fact about that, um, because that's going to stay until, like, the water days typically when they'll open back out for ATVs and stuff, that way it's just in great kind of.
I did reach out to Sworstman to see if they wanted to put something in parts and pieces or a picture, but just so they could capture that and the thing, so hopefully it comes through, and if it doesn't, then I'll just do something. By the way, they don't want to ride horses on the trails, but, uh, somebody did, said they didn't mess it up, so we just want it to be. Is that where it landed? They don't want.
It was before everybody ran the horse on the trail. They only want in block.
I think that it's been the case from like other places, horses have always traditionally been on that, so that is something that is going to be sort of a, you know, because it's the one time of year when people can ride horses over here at any event, so if that is someone we're going to not commit, we need to put that because I think that's going to take away an opportunity for a lot of people.
Uh, final submission for HUD, now HUD's the agency that is holding the two and a half million balls for road projects. Uh, the final submission has been sent and now the receipt was confirmed today, there's a fifteen day hold before they can proceed with releasing those funds. So best case scenario, within forty-five days, we would have money wired into us and the plan would be take a half a million bucks, put it to the side and put two million bucks into a CD for five or six months and see how the projects all play out, so we, because we won't have bills and we do have money to be able to pay, so, um, we'll keep you posted on that, but that was fine, we have some good news for them, uh, volunteers, your next regular meeting, we're going to do our annual appointments, there are vacancies on appointed boards and committees, um, and there are people that are up for reappointment, even if there's not a vacancy on the committee, if anybody has interest, please just submit a volunteer application available at the office online, we want to be able to keep a file of people that want to volunteer, so, um, hopefully we'll be able to fill all of the vacancies at the next regular meeting, I think I have applications.
Are the vacancies posted on the towns?
They're on the town website under, uh, north dot com slash volunteer, if you can get through that, or dot com slash drops, anyway, they're all there and everything's actively open, just there, but i- if it's tipping, you want to be on tip, give me a tip application, I don't, you know, let us know so that we can keep you on the horizon, because when somebody says, uh, I'll do it, you don't have to, I have three people that are willing to, so, um, there's an opening on budget committee, I've got some that says I'll take it if nobody else will take it, but I mean, that's not really the rule to be in terms of active. Uh, so anyway, so please don't hesitate to reach out for any visit, that met with the USDA from Och, about Ochmo Cemetery, that's on the same river road, about the possibility of securing funding and preserving the banks today. Uh, we talked about it briefly the last meeting, but they reviewed the property, took measurements, documented what they could find throughout their historical societies, pulling together historical data, which would strengthen that funding approach. But they said it's probably going to be more streamlined, believe it or not, to go through FEMA in their mitigation program, so I had a meeting with FEMA last week, and I have initiated that with them, so we're going to keep an eye on that, um, obviously the people aren't moving anytime soon, but, um, if we can get that, uh, lined up, then I think that would be helpful, because ultimately the cost of fixing that property, the way that they're going to want to fix it, is probably going to be more than these congressional directed spending money that we have the two and a half, we're probably living in the neighborhood of five to fix this cemetery the way that they want it, we do benefit from having revolutionary board veteran out there, so that will strengthen the willingness of the feds to support that. The Riverview Cemetery RFP that we issued that nobody responded to, I ended up direct mailing to eight or ten different people, and we finally got some interest, we actually got two referrals for the same firm out of Upstate New York, who comes and does a regular visit to Maine in the summer, um, and he's doing a training in New Sharon in June, and he was open the week after, so he's been willing to stay for another week, um, and we would just pay the daily rate, and so hoping that he'll have additional volunteers will come with him as a result of the New Sharon training. Uh, cemetery committees had an opportunity to look at some of the work that he's done, read some articles about what he's done, and his grade is nine hundred bucks day. Um, so we've got him signed up for four, maybe five days of work, um, in June to finally get that work underway, and then he'll be able to assess other areas, might need improvement or look for new materials and things like that, so, um, finally, after two and a half, three years, they're going to be able to get a meal moving on that. Uh, TIF committee will meet next week, I didn't know if that was going to actually happen, but we did get something back from SCDC about the revolving loan program that they're considering. I would expect that that's going to be on your next regular agenda, hopefully it will be, because also you'll have Christian Savage from the CDC here to talk to about the Somerset County Broadband Coalition and the progress that they're making and the impact on us here. Uh, we're filing sewer liens in the morning, there's twelve of those that have gone on for, uh, sewer use charges thirty-year-old. Redemption notices for tax-acquired and sewer use charge-acquired property, um, those are getting ready to go out, with the exception of the Main Street property, we'll talk about later in the meeting. Uh, that process has changed this year for the first time, we've talked about that, um, so it makes it a far more difficult process. Uh, but we'll get our way through that, anyway, workers' comp audit, instead of owing money this year, we actually got a refund of twenty-five-three dollars. Uh, Waste Management, we received their check last week, uh, eighty thousand dollars, which was about twenty-five percent over last year in the same period, so, um, there was an extra day in February, so I think that had an impact on it, but, um, obviously, it's, it's in part the new cell and then negotiator rights, it's a part of that, so being open and, and active, so, um, that's where we stand there. Uh, the library, uh, the main doors been issued because there's really a lone worker over there uh, most of the time, and the inability to lock that door from the inside, if there was ever that being in the same property with the school, uh, heightens that concern, and so legitimate brought to our attention. We had to order special door, yada, 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 it wasn't any more expensive, it just was, had to be special ordered, so that has been installed, um, to satisfaction there, and so that is good. They've got a lot of different programs going on, so try to keep up with that, um, the fire department, we have uh, RFP out for a side-by-side and trailer purchase, I'm going to pull that one to the end, um, and Todd can talk about that, but that's going to be coming on your plate here next month or so. FEMA, I met with them formally last week about the December storm and compiling everything to send off to them GPS coordinates of trees and things like that. Um, and then I have another meeting with them tomorrow, Springfield up at our properties, especially Riverview Park, which is at Maple Street on the other side of the river, Sewell Park, and the cemetery on the river room, were all places of silt dumping, and so that's not currently in our regular maintenance contract. They were pretty honest about that, there's also debris in the cemetery that needs to get hauled off, there are, um, you know, high-level assessments of stone damage that took place because of things that happened over there. Um, and so they, the contractors provided me with no proposal for each of those properties. Um, I've accepted each of those properties separately and will file each of those properties with FEMA as a part of the flood damage, and I'll report that tomorrow, I told them it was happening at the last meeting, but, um, now we're better in writing, so that I can actually submit that to them. Also under that is the replacement building for Sewell Park, replaced the order yesterday, and that check is on the warrant for tonight, so that I can pay that out and start getting that process for reimbursement to insurance, uh, but New England Rent Home, um, Jeremy up on, uh, Red Barn Road is one of the owners. Uh, I said, well, for the sake of streamlining things, could you put the electrical go in the building instead of me having another contract committed like we did the last time? Yeah, no problem, and he's donating all of that electrical work, so that's, you know, twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars in additional value. Uh, of course, we're paying for this one through insurance this time around, but still, he's going to be moving the old one for us and replacing the new one, so very much appreciated there. The Red Cross is sponsoring a smoke detector replacement program in April, uh, it should be April twentieth, if everything bodes with their planning, free smoke detectors, no age, income, or ability qualifications. We're hoping there's going to be some folks from our fire department that support that effort, it's an educational slash safety opportunity. Um, and even if you're hard of hearing or blind, they'll put in the shakers in your bed and things like that, it's all at one cost, so, um, it's kind of unique opportunity for what we see in the area where mainly it's fire department potentially assuming liability, the Red Cross is taking care of all of this, so. Connected to that was I did meet with the executive director of our region's Red Cross to discuss opportunities related to our emergency response plans, communication and things like that, the triggers we've talked about in the past, um, and so what's going to happen is she's going to help guide me through the process of creating that plan, then the review and send it back, and then hopefully tie in maybe Smithfield Mercer as partners on that, so that we've got a couple of extra layers of redundancy, so. Uh, sorry to go along, but we're almost there. The backhoe public works is a twenty-twenty-one backhoe, it's got seventeen hundred twenty-five hours, and from day one we have had issues with it, it was hydraulic issues at the gates, been electronic and mechanical issues since. Uh, we have been in contact with CAT, and I say in contact, they're populated by phone, um, and so then it resorts to email, it's been a month tomorrow, since I've heard from the rep, that they're going to get back to me next week. And so anyway, I've been working with a resident that works for CAT in a different side of the business to try to get this done, but, um, this is the point where we take a backhoe out into the field and we cannot shut it off, because it's a strong chance it's not going to come back on. So when they get it running, they get it running, and, and so that obviously has an inflation factor on our hours, but, um, for perspective, I Google it, so that's all one hundred percent fact, the average life range uh, of a backhoe is seven thousand and fifteen thousand, depending upon, you know, how hard it's used, so, um, anyway, discouraging all across the board there, but, um, we've not, we've been through this before with them, where they pulled us on fifteen or twenty thousand dollars and we had to battle back, this machine was eighteen months old, whatever, so. Um, you know, hopefully everything will work out, but it's been really discouraging to work through that process with them. The rec committee met yesterday, last night, to discuss a lot of different things, uh, they're working to develop our prioritized project list for the programs, facility, equipment needs, things like that. So I think that was very productive, Cheyenne's on the committee. Um, so I think she could attest to that, but there are also a few other sticky areas we worked through last night. Uh, program directors, we have one that does all three, but, um, how can we work to retain a program director, do we need to restructure or increase compensation in general or what? So those are, that's something that they're working on, and then also we've had issues lately, um, with uh, behavior, whether it's player, parent, coach, or whatnot, and then how do we handle that internally and try to be as consistent and fair as possible, so. Um, we're working on stealing somebody else's public conduct, creating a written form for folks to be able to file those, so we don't have to launch a full-blown investigation, but then, um, you know, you're not just going to pick up the phone and call and complain because, uh, Lindsay was too loud and she offended me. No, it's not going to be those, it's not going to be those, but those passive, it's not going to be those passive kind of complaints, it's going to be something that carries there, something we're willing to put pen to paper. Um, I mean, it's, it is, it's people's livelihood, but it's people's reputation, and we want to take that seriously, at the same time, we have to have a high standard for the behavior that we have in front of our children. So, um, very productive there last night, also, the last couple of weeks, we signed off on the term maintenance plan for the ball fields, which was one of the things that the committee was passionate about, at a meeting out there with them today. Um, I'm going to send the information to Waste Management if they were interested in piggybacking for buying them. And, uh, but they were really excited about the opportunity for that, and then they want to talk about, the rec committee's been talking about the softball field and needing to shim that up to make that better, which is costly, but all sports fields was there, I said, hey, can you work me up a price, so in the next couple of weeks, you're going to give me that, so I can show that with the rec committee too, but it was probably the most productive rec committee that we've had since I've been here, so. Anyway, that's all good news there, and they're working to revise the Cal Ripken agreement, which expired in twenty-eighteen, so. Kind of my fault, but, anyway, we're getting. Um, the sewer department, I'm trying to reintegrate a part-time backup employee into that department, not to get into the big depths of it, but years ago, we always had one and a half people, we had a full-time and a half, and this one went from public works, public work staffing is where it needs to be at best, really can't afford to pull somebody out. Um, but the redundancy of sewer is going to be necessary, and so it will put straight on their budget. Um, but it's what's necessary, and so the sewer commissions often work through budgeting and rate setting and whatnot, but, um, that's where we're going to go, I'm actually in the process of working with our opponent enforcement officer to determine whether or not this can be viable option to share time between the two. It seems as always going to be, but I don't want to steep critically. And if that's the case, I think that would be a good dovetail there that provides a better employment opportunity, but then also gives us the services that we need, and as a great response that we need from that department, so. I don't want to step into the other building positions for people, but, um, I think if he's willing, then it's a good opportunity for the town and the sewer department. And the sewer commission will meet April ninth to discuss, um, well, they'll need to elect their new officers, there are two vacancies on the sewer commission right now. That's a great one, and rates every year go up, right, that's what we're seeing, so there's a lot going on, they're also going to be talking about, uh, considering infiltration study, once they're done televising these lines, which is still in, in the works, uh, we know that when arranged, we get a lot more through the system, and so that's not the way it's supposed to be, we're not supposed to have storm drains, we're not supposed to have cracks in the pipes, we have areas where the camera can't get through. Um, and so the permanent chair of the commission believes that it's a good idea that will actually provide ROI until they'll be considering that evidence to. Thank you, thank you. Uh, let's see, number six here is, actually, I'm watching, uh, general warrant, number five.
I'm going to approve general warrant number five in amount two hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents.
One second, any further discussion?
Why is there so much, uh, for IT this year?
So we have our regular payment today, I have the down payment for the replacement for a Sewell park, which is fifteen hundred bucks, we've upgraded security here. Um, and so that's in this, I've got the payment for Ashland Park, the surveillance out there that we already agreed to, um, but that's the backend of the payment that's not due yet, but I wanted it to be here because my check cutter's gone on vacation, and then there's the back, I'm holding another check, the back half of the Sewell park. I'm holding the back half of the Sewell parks, which will be due on completion, so that I can put that through insurance together with the building itself. So it appears separately because we cut checks at separate times. Anything else for discussion? See none, call us in favor. Uh, discussion action on airport warrant, number three.
I will quickly include the airport warrant, number three, in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-one cents.
Motion second, any discussion?
What's, um, annual support pumps and key pads?
So that is the technology behind the gas pumps, credit card machine.
Okay, so that's meant to strip the fixed cost, we have yours in the year, okay.
We do that every year.
That's, I see, and that's just make sure the machines comes up. We were shocked that, is that, I mean, I'm sure that's probably going right, but like.
Yeah, I can, it's ridiculous what they're charging for fuel pumps and fuel machines.
And I'm guessing there's also like fees that come with, like on top of the current services, I mean.
I don't see that, Peter, do I? The, the card fees, or do we pay card fees, or is that included in the monthly bills?
Uh, we do pay credit card fees.
These are fees, I'm not right here for us.
Uh, any further discussion? See none, all was in favor. Seven. And discussion action on March twentieth, school amendment?
Move to approve the sewer commitment in the amount of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Hold on a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor. And public comments?
I just want to make sure I cover all my bases. Get those people on, on, on Main Street, we're going to try to take care of that. But we could take two, we could take care of two, we apologize.
Actually, thank you, I'll take some of the public fun. Road committee had a productive meeting this week, a short amount of time, minimal number of family stories. There is an area on Upper Main Street that was completed just before I got here. Uh, where it appears is there's a forty-five degree angle in the culvert in the middle of the road, right near the pipeline. And it appears from what we can see at the surface that the, it separated the deal above, causing problems with the road. So we're going to pay somebody to send a camera down through the culvert, make sure we've got, we've got magnetizer from Utah, should be pretty inexpensive, use something like Stans, just to get down in there, see what it's looking like. Paint it on the top of the road so we can isolate it and just have a contract to come in and hopefully put the, um, couple of that together. Hopefully, but the engineering design on that was unique.
I thought we paid a lot for that too, that uniqueness.
That's correct, so, thank you for reminding me that.
But the, the only thing that I can say about that uniqueness is, is if you look at it, it's because they didn't want to do that day, because the there's, the cemetery isn't such a core box, and you got the dog, I know why, I just don't know why you wouldn't shoot a cross. And, I mean, we got more, we got joints in there, we don't need.
Uh, it's engineer.
Uh, I, I have something that for, I don't know, update for fire department, but if you want it now or during the different.
No, please go ahead.
So on our side-by-side project, if you're not aware, then we have one new member, so I can just give you the whole thing. So we went out to put the side-by-side, uh, out to bid. Do we tell? Ish? March eighth, apparently. So it went out to all the major manufacturers of these machines, the three closest dealers that we could find, uh, from their dealer locators. Um, so we probably mailed Richard twenty-ish out to, uh, we hand-carried some to the locals, like Hardy, Three D, et cetera. We've talked to many manufacturer or dealers that are going to supply proposals, and all that's due on April fifth. So we will, um, have a little bit of opening party on April fifth, I would expect to come to the board on second meeting in April to ask you to award it, um, I'm hoping that between the fifth and the seventeenth, that it's fairly cut and dry and easy for us as a department to have a recommendation for you. Um, presuming that we, it is cut and dried and easy for us to come up with a recommendation, we'll be on the seventeenth asking you to award that, so where's the money coming from? So that's, um, Alice Emery's fifty thousand that she, uh, left. And, and in, in addition to that, we need a trailer, right, so instead of going a full-on public bid on the trailer, what we decided to do there was to go, there are two local aluminum enclosed trailer manufacturers, there is Alcon and Winsler, and there is Nitro and Pittsfield, they're probably both employing Orange Rock residents, I'm sure. And so we went to a local dealer, eating, getting two prices of the same trailer, essentially the same trailer, and we'll have a recommendation for you then as well on the seventeenth, and then of course we'll need a firefighting scan to go in the back of it, which is a seven or eight thousand dollar purchase, so, all in all, we're looking at a seventy-five thousand dollar project, probably, we gotta wait till we get the bids, we don't really know.
That's more than the fifty thousand that we're going.
There you go, so, right, so, we, uh, we're anticipating fifteen thousand from, uh, the county. So the county has a program, uh, funded by Northern Windmills, they have a TIF account of their own. Uh, we kind of get some verbal support from, from our, uh, commissioner, we actually go through an application process expecting to get, uh, that fifteen thousand, uh, that puts you at sixty-five, and then I'll probably come here with an idea or two to see what's left and, and how we can fund that. Yeah, whether it's our, or do we look back to our TIF committee, or, 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 right, there's probably lots of options, but if we can make that number really small for you, then we probably can find a way to do it. I, I, I'm guessing until we get bids, I don't know.
Yeah, that number feels like super high, I'll be honest, do we have a side-by-side now?
No. We have a two thousand and two Polaris Sports in the mountains.
Maybe, where is one for like? I don't know, it just seemed like an awful lot of money, I mean, and nice to have, but is it absolute? So we'll see what the bids come back at, but that is a lot.
Yeah, right. We'll see what the bids come back at, we, we have a pretty tight spec.
Yeah.
For a lot of reasons, I'll window them now, but we don't, why we're having an enclosed cap, or why we're having this, why.
I'm just thinking too, like, where is that going to get stored?
In the fire station.
If you can say that, it's in there, it'd be.
And then the other part of that whole thing, which we won't probably talk about on April seventeenth, but we have that side-by-side today with a trailer that we need to dispose of. I would presume there was a bid, sealed bid process.
ATV today.
Sorry, we had an ATV today, you're right, just your traditional ATV, sorry, I used the wrong term. We'll have to dispose of that, but of course, there's a whole timing issue, right, so we can't get rid of that until the other is complete, so. Potentially, the excess money that we need is, we have, we just regarding for the worst thing, so. We can potentially use that money to put back in with another kind. More, more to follow, when we know more, what the pricing is going to be.
Thank you.
Good. Richard, did you, do you have anything scheduled for that? Camera yet? On that Upper Main Street, you know, okay. With the water going now. Remember, I'm.
All right, uh, moving forward, uh, let's see, uh, annual update from Wason and, so we will get ready to use that.
I'd refer only you, Paul. I've seen the other side, recently. So, um, thank you, uh, for Cheyenne's benefit, congratulations, and, um, uh, part of our Phase Fourteen, um, expansion project, we agreed with the town that it made great sense to come in at a minimum of once a year. We, through conversations with Richard and the board, we decided it would be best to do it when, after the election, in case there's anybody new, which, uh, and as part of that process, um, go over activity for the previous calendar year on complaints, concerns, and then update on projects that we have going on and, uh, open it up to questions or answers to anything you folks have, and beside that, I, in Richard's eyes, I can, everyone, I think everyone here, I know it's open seven days a week, if anybody's got a concern. And, uh, I think that's worth, well, keep it that way. What's that? So, yeah, so for calendar year two thousand and twenty-three, we had three registered calls, now, I will be the first to admit that, you know, we run away, but we do have odor, but we received three calls relative to odor, that doesn't mean that we don't have one, I'm just being upfront with anybody here. Um, and if somebody has the same problems, please let us know. But back in, uh, April of last year, I, I believe Derek received the call, it was on the weekend, and there was considerable odor in the community, and, um, Derek, if anybody here knows Derek, he rides around the community pretty much every one in the daybreak, and has a pretty good idea of what's going on, whether it's Sunday or Monday. And most of, so, um, he got out and about, because obviously we're very concerned, and after a, a little bit of investigation, we determined on that particular morning at about ten AM, that it was a result of a manure pit in the area that was receiving some activity, and the lower part of the community here, I think all around town, was having odor relative to what we. So, that one went past us, which, thank you. Uh, the next call was, uh, um, in October on the nineteenth, that was a, he's a homeowner on Airport Road, and, uh, we were able to determine around the time that, that the person called, which was at nine forty-two in the morning, that we had just received two back-to-back loads of sludge from a treatment plant, and, um, they, as the wind direction would have it, they probably got it with them. Uh, we managed it, uh, got it, our, our goal is when it comes in, uh, turn it out, mix it, blend it, cover it, put it to rest, um, they, they probably got it with them, without any question, and I, we agree. Uh, in, uh, later in October of the same month, uh, the thirty-first, a driver by uh, contacted Sherwood that, um, Uh contacted Sherwood that um they had uh an order of uh what they appear to be sludge. And uh they were on Route Two traveling. And we are confident that they came in contact with a truck that was coming into the landfill. From a from another community and. Sludge is such that I, you know, if you're traveling on the interstate going southbound and a full load is coming northbound. Uh us being in the business, I I can stop up. Uh you know. Five hundred yards away and it's headed north, uh it's just just do. Uh and if anybody gets right behind one for any extended period of time. I get it. But this particular time that we got the call, we did recognize that at the time the person was going past the entrance of the landfill, a truck had just come in. And we determined that that's. Uh and those are the three calls that we got of concern. Uh and I, you know, I know other people have said, you know, it's smell, we get it, we do too. Uh but sustainable problems on an ongoing basis. Not so much, we recently as employees of the facility um doing our routine ride arounds, found an area in landfill where. We were smelling odor out at the corner of Old Phase Eight closest to the gate transfer. Um through some investigation of our own, we ended up purchasing. Thousand dollars worth of pipe, put in a new lateral line, pop the landfill, bra in the area, added into another well. To pull gas into the system and burn at the plant. So we we as managers. Look at it daily and try to keep ahead of it, um you know, we're month season, a month in advance. The worst time in the world comes to landfills when the snow blows. Because the wind blows, you pick, you pick, you pick, the wind blows, and you reap it. And it's just, it's just very discouraging process, but we're we're a month ahead of it this year and it looks really good. Uh to us, um but we still, you know. It's gonna snow this weekend, uh we'll file May passes, the wind will, the wind's supposed to blow at one forty-five miles an hour, so when the truck dumps. And uh we're up high on the new phase fourteen cell A. Uh it blows, we have litter fence around. Three quarters of the facility and temporary litter fences that we make and remove and adjust when the wind blows, it still blows out and we leave it. But that's, you know, that's by portion, um Sherwood. And I apologize not to do it, Sherwood is our district engineer, I'm the general manager, and Derek is our operations manager, that. The day to day crew answers throughout in the landfill and um. For scheduling, uh managing equipment, usage of equipment, uh. Concerns with trucks, uh you know, part of our day for the most part. That is our biggest. E O A is if our trucks coming in and making noise, that there's no reason for them to do that. And I can sit in my office, uh which is. Quarter mile off of Route Two and I can hear them just as plain as day from my office and when they come down to the scale also a little hill. And they drag their jakes. As anyone knows, it works with me, my first calls to scale and remind them of what we don't don't accept. And it's hard, but we spend a lot of time rearranging and re- reallocating what truck drivers do. Because they can they can come across the interview to people in the community. Yeah, you're right.
Well, I know as a board and definitely as a team member, that we appreciate your diligence and taking every single little point in his way and. Addressing it, looking into it and acting so quickly and taking it seriously, I think that everyone appreciates that.
Well, yeah, thank you, and for the most part, in in we live here too. We we our first goal is when we have a new opening, hire someone from normal. I I fight with our corporate group on that, it's crazy because, but I do. You know, they'll they'll tell us that we need to post.
Well, yeah, and again, I'm sure I'm sure there are venues.
Well, you know, for example, we were on a call just today, our our monthly financial call and our facility and. Other other facilities, some of us get half a dozen a day sometimes, yeah, it's it's tough. It's tough and it has to do with proximity, you know, we're in the country, it's different. Um there and some of these are very city based, some of them are right next to the interstate from Hampshire. They go through H E double L. What's that?
Three is high for you.
Yeah.
It really is.
But we did it serious and we, you know, and I live here. Derek lives right in North Rock, Sherwood, you know, we talked today, Sherwood's just five miles away, so. And I mean it, it's our goal to hire local. Makes sense, people can respond quicker to help us. They they're closer to work, they show up to work. Just it works and I have to fight with our company over because. You know, I try to say, when I interview a laborer from Rumford, it's like, really, Rumford, you wanna drive over here for sixteen dollars an hour? A laborer, I'm I when I tell my corporate group, I'm like, we're setting ourselves up for you, you know, need to hire somebody that has more than one, if I can. That way they're way here, one idea, but. So from there, we have a a variety of projects, we actually have. And Sherwood will pro- Sherwood will provide you some brief updates on the projects. And then just any questions or concerns you might want us to look at, focus on, we're happy to do it.
Yeah, we have uh more projects that this year and last year than typical. Uh must start with landfill cell construction, um Jeff mentioned it, uh. We started in twenty twenty-two and in twenty twenty-three, we constructed phase fourteen A. Seven and a half acre landfill cell. We started operating it um August twenty-eighth of last year. So that's going quite well. Um as of February of this year, uh we retained Sergeant Corporation, again contractor, earthquake contractor. Uh to they were actually working on the pump wall from February, upgrading some erosion control structures. Um we hope to start um the landfill cell components and cells. From the silk clay to the geosynthetics, the uh drainage sand layers. We've got to install some landfill gas pipes, some leachate piping, we hope to start all that, starting with clay on May first. Um it's kind of upsetting with the snow coming, but um it's been, you know, a dry spring. So we will be taking the clay, just so everyone knows, from Gwain Farmer. Which is like three quads of mile from our facility on Route Two.
Same as last year.
Same as last year. Um so that's what's going on with landfill cell construction, um. Let's talk about landfill cap and currently we're planning to, we designed a ten point one acre. Uh cap for our phase eight landfill. Um our phase eight landfill is the landfill we've been in for a couple decades now. And we're really transitioning out of that landfill. Um and as a result of that, we're really trying to get cap down as quickly as we can. Unfortunately, we got forty-eight point nine acres left to cap. You can't do large caps in the state of Maine just because of short construction season. Um so we're doing ten point one acres this year. Uh followed by, you know, the next three years until we're completely closed out. So um we've submitted all the design documents to the D E P, they have them. And we expect to receive approval here in next month or so, so. Probably piggyback that construction and utilize Sergeant uh for that as well from down. Um Airport Road Transfer Station project, that is currently uh substantially complete. Uh but there is additional work to do there. Um there we're currently fabricating some container in compacted covers. Uh these are pretty large containers, they'll go, uh excuse me, covers go to roll off containers. Uh we anticipate that being done by mid-April or so. But there's work such as we need to bring in the paving contractor to put down a surface course, then re-striper. Then we need to spend some time abandoning the existing transfer station. So at this point in time, realistically, we're really not looking at, we're looking at like June first to open that facility. So we're excited about that, it in my opinion, opinions, one of the best transfer stations in the state of Maine. Yeah, thank you.
So those covers, um just for knowledge. Um most transfer stations throughout the state are just open air transfer stations, other than. Ones where the compactor packs the pack into a closed can. As part of managing stormwater. One of the new commitments state to the company is to cover demolition cans that might leach water out or what have you. So we put these big elaborate covers over them, they cost a small fortune, but it'll keep, it has to be up in the air high enough such that. As the truck backs in to load the can, the the cover's high enough and won't come in contact with the hoist. The can on the hoist and then going from the backside of the can, we wanna be able to with a loader pack it down during the day away from the public. So that we can get more capacity of it on on primarily weekdays Saturdays. But it's a new process, it's the right process, I I've said here before. This is my thirty-second year, when I started here, the transfer station we have today was old dinosaur then. And we've been there too long, it's it's lots of variants, none of them there is, but the new one will be very nice and I will tell you that. Derek and I, we we are constantly dealing with. Violators at attacking the transfer station, it is a real pain in the tail. There are lots of little entrepreneurs in the surrounding communities that like to take advantage of free disposal. And collect things from wherever they can, charge a nickel or a quarter or whatever they can and bring it here for free. We don't charge at the back gate, we bill every town accordingly, there's no money that changes hands. But we're starting to do our due diligence to crack down on. Violators and when a one time comes in or pickup rounded with green bags, you know, it didn't come off from the house, they were picking up from. An apartment building or whatever, wherever and. Where does that really be on it? You know, and there are contractors that. Some take advantage of it, you know, if the contractor's doing their job in Waterville, lives in Orange Walk. Trust me, it's a lot cheaper to get ready to drive to free in Orange Walk, if you can, come to the back gate, then. Going to Waterville Transfer to the two hundred bucks a ton cheaper. You know, zero versus a hundred plus. Uh but it's challenged, and we're working on it. So our our new attendant, uh Dan Langto, senior from Orange Walk is probably doing. So I'm not trying to discredit any previous employees out there, but he's doing the best job we've ever had of of counting. You know, his goal is eat safe facility, environmentally sound facility and out every darn vehicle and company and stuff. But we're doing it, we've talked with Richard about scanner, if anybody, we are. We've been looking, looking, been looking for. A scanner system with barcode sticker that would go on a vehicle and so far we're striking out, but. We're we have not. Well, we've we we've looked at a group, uh I'll forget the name, but it's like uh dealing with uh campgrounds. You win, you have your card, the gate goes up, you go through it, but but there are too many one offs. You people coming in, they're gonna have a tire, they're gonna have a computer, they're gonna have a light bulb and those all have to get recorded individually. They there are many one offs, you know, we're open to suggestions, we are trying to find new ways. Crack down and manage people aside from putting a scale and another full time employee.
You know, parking badges, we've talked about that.
Parkingbox dot com, E O double X. They have different suggestions, they cater to parking garages, campgrounds and whatever, but not necessarily transmission station.
Just real quick, not really relevant, the kind of, because we've been working on. Transfer station stickers and how we hand them out and sign them, the process of them actually taking our temporary stickers. People don't appreciate value for your track. And people will sell our stickers. To other people in other communities. People's only Facebook is on the north, they want. Social media will let you know that people at the town office are ridiculous, scripted and everything else, because if I pay taxes here, it will do this and that. If you do not have a vehicle registered here and or a building here that generates rubbish, you will not get a, you will not get a sticker from us to go out there. People really have an issue with it, but.
That's it.
We're letting people go in there and we know that people don't get it. Um but you'll hear that from time to time, the office staff is being curmudgeoned, but. This is a special instance, we pick up the phone and call.
Yeah, we worked well together on that process. Well.
When you ask both of you, most like.
Sorry, no problem, um couple unique projects that's uh going on currently at Crossroads. PFAS Treatment System. Um it's the the treatment process is what they refer to as foam fractionation. We don't really know an incredible amount about it, um we just know that it. Uh the raw leachate tank, they will pump into the PFAS Treatment Building. And they put it through a process where they inject air. And it drives foam, or the PFAS likes to go to the foam, doesn't like staying liquid. So the foam will go to one tank. Um the liquid, which is now uh feeling PFAS free, will go to another tank. Um and that's, you know, essentially the process, so we're well into the design on that. We've submitted the permit application to the state yesterday. So it's currently in their hands for approval, we've had several pre meetings with them and it's going pretty well. Um we anticipate starting construction in June. And ending at the end of this year, I think that's pretty aggressive. But um that's the goal. And we 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 need to come see you folks, you town folks, we need to go through the planning board process. So I anticipate you'll see us in late April, early May to uh go through that process, but that's upcoming.
So stay there, just so. All the leachate from the landfill used to go to Saffy, hundred percent of it, we had an arrangement with them. Um we got a cease and desist from Saffy in October of twenty. Yeah, I think it's something like that, twenty-one, whatever, doesn't matter. Um we now, and and years ago. Uh a company representative uh said, geez, you guys should have a backup, so we started doing business with Hanson Madison. Some ten years ago. And we would send a limited quantity to Hanson Madison, so we had to put in the door. And that got to that, and now a hundred percent goes to Hanson Madison. We generate on average twenty-five to thirty million gallons of leachate a year. Um this month will do, in March, I'll be anticipating about. Two point seven to two point nine million gallons, um December, flood, January, February, those are three point five million gallon months. Um you have no idea when we got a flood in December, what the three of us went through. Making sure we had a place to go with our leachate because. Because of PFAS, because we manage items that everybody here in the room throws away, that manufactures. Put forever chemicals in and it goes into our liquid from the landfill and uh contaminates the the residue. Um nobody wants it because of the stigma attached with. Where it goes, whether it's whether their treatment plants discharging to the name of Scott River, the Kennebec River, the Penobscot River, or wherever, whatever. Every call we made in December, the door was shut in that face. Um for help, for backup at any cost. Uh fortunately, the folks at Hanson Madison, uh we were able to back up our system, we have a we have a million gallons of storage at the facility. And our goal, um that Derek keeps a very good handle on every day with the trucker H O Burschard, doesn't make sure that our leachate stays. Down to. Read, hopefully never more than ten feet, we have the maximum is a little over twenty feet, we try to keep it down well. In the winter time, you don't want it too low or it might freeze, you agitate it, keep it going, so everything works. But uh in December, we had a heck of a month, but um. Hanson Madison um. Was able to take us back within twenty-four hours, it was great, it was really, we were really, really. Uh the relationship we have and um everything, everything lined up very well. Uh but managing leachate is a challenge, it's tough. We're putting in our own pre-treatment of PFAS so that should that ever happen to us again. Uh we hope to have approval at A S T V in Waterville and the valley. Uh we're looking at Augusta as a backup. Um not to say that even though we can show people that we have, we have leachate that is PFAS. But they still might not want. And just because of public stigma, it's 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 a challenge. Uh but we do have a good arrangement with uh contracted Hanson Madison. Uh and we are going to. Uh continue to put our own PFAS in, even though the three of us. Would just assume invest in Hanson Madison. Would just assume invest in Hanson Madison, send it all there, but people above us are like, no, we'll put our own system in and spend. What we thought was going to be a three million dollar system that could grow as high as eight. And you know, at the end of the day, that's cost per gallon to get rid of it. So. Hanson Madison is putting in PFAS treatment systems, so you know, there's a big vacancy between. And we run ours and still send it there and it goes through theirs. But we're gonna do it. Uh, as I understand it. Yeah, that's what I understand. It'll be so that we have other options. You know, someday, who knows, we might go back to a Saffy. I don't know, I doubt it. Uh, we we likely will end up. You know, because there are transportation dollars incurred to get it to the closest facility that can have a treatment in Waterville. Maybe Augusta. Uh, potential for a Bangor, but I I'm likely. Uh, we're working with uh, Waka, which is Louis Navarre, Santa. So, you know, just like keeping a loop on that.
Is that something that you just have to have? More volume in a facility available that a little bit over again. Um, I I don't want to get too much of the process, the economics necessarily, but. Does it pose an economic opportunity for Norwood Sewer?
Well.
If you were pre-treating.
Norwood Sewer, pre Jeff McGowan. Uh, and well, I don't know if it's pre-cho or the kind sort of knows. There was a, there was a, there was movement afoot way back when. To make sure that under any circumstance, waste management never go to the Norwood Sewer treatment plant and. It's maybe too bad.
It is very much too bad.
But right now, I don't think the facility is designed such that we could go there because we maybe before Richard. Uh, was town manager, a couple of times we've looked at what would it take? For waste management and Norwood to get back. Uh, attached to be able to do something. I don't think the facility has the ability to do it is what. Um, is it, is it, uh?
Well, their internal time was void and warranty is on their equipment.
You know, they'll come a day. Didn't say so, but they'll come a day. Where there's potential. For our facility to. Uh, look at a pipeline competing against that. Maybe a long rail, but you know, might get shot down. It'll come a day post Jeff McGowan, long after I retire. But there'll come a day where there'll make some, there will be some logistical sense to. Pipe in our material elsewhere versus all the trucking.
And I was thinking.
Likely.
Thank you.
Likely, we'd join into that potentially. But that's a, that's a project we've talked about with Hanson Madison. It's kind of a pipe dream, but. It's it's not. But there's this potential for that someday and 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 and. Um, part of that process might even be where there's a, there's a uh. A station on our property where somebody from Farmington might come over. You know, offload at our unloading station, you know, on the pipeline and go versus truck. Just, it's just. But it's it's way down the road.
And I'll I'll also say that we did look at, we hired a consultant to look at the potential to go to Norwood. Uh, since probably fifteen, twenty years now. If I remember correctly, it was significant upgrades needed. Back then in millions of dollars in order to make it work. I do with all that.
Anyway, sorry.
No, no, uh. So another project that we're currently uh, working on is the BioSalads Processing Facility. Know you thought folks might be a little familiar with that and then we came to the uh, the planning board and got site plan approval. Um, we've actually received all permits, uh, state permits, but for that uh, project. Um, we're in the process of design, but I would say we're about seventy percent complete on the design component. And um, your construction, um. Is anticipated to start late this year. And to continue into twenty twenty five completion by the end of twenty twenty five. So we're pretty excited about that project. Essentially bring in. On a daily basis approximately uh, two hundred tons of sludge. And it just goes through this drying process with heat pumps and long conveyor belts. And it reduces it to fifty tons. So that hundred fifty pounds essentially water. What they refer to as condensate. And the condensate will go to a tank. And it will get pumped out to the leachate storage tank facility and will treat it if it's got PFAS in it. If not, then we'll uh, seek another outlet.
Um, so. Um, Cheyenne wasn't, you know, we talked about that earlier on, but this is a low temperature, essentially pizza roll. That'll walk sludge across the process. Uh, there'll be three feed lines that'll carry sludge off, dry it and in the end drop it out. Uh, in a, in something that is seventy, seventy five percent dry.
Yeah.
Um, we're there. We have, uh, we have a separate group within our company. Uh, a couple of individuals that have come to meetings, Jamie Edgar and Lindsay Dow. Uh, and we have a uh, very uh. With a lot of letters of intent. Uh, which are great, uh, but. Like any big business, ours, uh. Before our corporate group will invest in, this is a thirty five to thirty eight million dollar project. And before we receive the funding to actually do it, we're going to leave contractual commitments from these towns. Uh, so from a competitive nature, there was an announcement just yesterday. From one of our competitors that they'll be working with a uh, default uh, closed. Uh, digester sludge management facility in Brentwood. Uh, and compete against us and and they're offering publicly considerably less money, less cost per ton, so. We'll we'll see where this goes. Ours is real. That one really isn't real at this time. Um, but uh, the state uh, for the last. Couple of years has been in a crunch of what to do with with biosalads. Um, because of PFAS and farm fields that have. Over the years, you know, technology back in the late eighties, nineties and until just recently was that. Uh, farmers could spread sludge and have a. Free or get paid for. Uh, fertilized product that would fertilize their fields and it was, it was the best available science at the time and now it's, it's biting everybody. Uh, unfortunately. So um, there's a, there's a law in Maine now on the books that says there'll be no more spreading of biosalts. Under any circumstances, so uh, it'll have to be the main answer right now is landfill. Um, we are not the big uh, landfill of sludge. Our competitor takes much more than we do. Uh, we take a very small amount of sludge and some of that is driven by our company, which doesn't want to put more than ten percent of the. Total aggregate into the landfill of sludge for stability purposes. They don't want to water up the landfill and create other problems. Uh, so we are not the big one. That's why we're looking at alternative technology. Uh, but uh, there's still a competitive process. Uh, to compete for that uh, product. Uh, we're. We're in, we're in it to do it, but uh, it's not all there yet. Um, working a lot of hard daily. We have a. Very strong group of individuals that have great background in the, in the field and I'm. Very confident we'll have a good project, but uh, we're not completely there in funding for obvious reasons. Okay, sorry.
We have a project. No, I'm done. We purchased some property in Clack property, like the weed in late twenty twenty two. And we're currently working with Sergeant Corp. They've hired a woodharvester. Um, to clear that property. Um, and to take all the stumps out and grind the stumps. Uh, we're clearing it because we've done some soil borns and there's some really good sand deposits there. For construction purposes. So this entire process required us to go through the state and get two permits, which we received. And um, we should be done with the clearing and and de-stumping this week. Uh, the Legasi Road will need some work uh, subsequent to completion. And uh, we we plan to get that road back in shape. Uh, we may wait a few weeks just because of the time of year. Uh, but we'll likely bring in some loads of gravel and Derek will work to get that road uh, back in shape.
But that's a private road.
It's a off the airport road.
I've seen the work on airport road, but where is the gas?
Right across the Chell Rogers. Yeah, so that property is talking about is if you're going in on Airport Road, you'll see some activity before you get to the. Transfer station on your left. That's the property we're talking about. And and the Legasi Road kind of divides the parcel into a couple of pieces. So the bigger pieces on your left of Legasi, the smaller pieces on the right, but you're seeing more activity on the smaller ones, correct?
That's correct. So the smaller piece. Uh, is is probably twenty percent of the soil of the entire parcels together. Um, we plan to remove sand deposits from there. Out onto the airport road when we do final cap construction. Uh, but a majority of the effort will be in the larger parcel to the left. And we will not be coming out on the airport road. Um, we got approval from. The Nerco folks at the D P to actually build a bridge, a span. Over the wetlands in the stream will be taking those sand. Deposits in directly into the phase fourteen site to build the surrounding perimeter road.
Without any traffic.
Without any traffic, which is really nice.
But whatever damage goes down to the gas, we will pray. Fix it back.
Yeah.
And we've had one call on that and we've shared that it will be taken care of. Think one. Oh, we did have a fire, but that'll be in next year's report, but we had a small fire in February.
Oh, yeah.
And.
Probably, he wasn't looking at you.
Uh, and and we, we, you know. We've had, we've had a couple of years ago, a couple fires years ago that were more significant. Uh, and those were treated to a um. Company that we're doing business with. And we no longer do business with them. We haven't had meetings as a result with the recent one. We're quite certain it has to do with somebody throwing away our embers. I'm a little stoned. But. It, no, it was in the. It was fourteen A and it was February twenty eighth. By thirteen A and then.
What day?
February twenty eighth. Those guys are on it. They know what's going on. Your twenty four seven operation. Don't work what I meant next year or next year before, but if anyone ever has. Anything you want to talk about, the result is open, so please.
If I had one. My question, what you just said. So if you take. The sludge, the PFAS out of the sludge, would you still have?
No, 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 you misunderstood. We're not taking the PFAS out of the slide.
Okay. So there's still sludge in the, correct? Yes, okay, I just, okay, I I was bred too much in that, I think that the sludge can be. No, it will not be, okay.
The sludge.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I was just hoping that I was just processing, thinking that the sludge may have some significant use.
There, there might be one in the future. Uh, there's potential that the company, and our company has a patent on this. To make, uh, to put in hyrolysis, I mean, say it. And um, generate a char. For your PFAS that would be resaleable. But that's uh. That's way out there.
Because uh, some research has been done by waste management forward. There's a PFAS days of solids. The solids on the landfill. Test the condensate. They don't think there's going to be PFAS in the condensate. It's just dropped out into the solids. They're going to test it. If there's no PFAS and it doesn't need to be treated across the road at the PFAS frequency system. But uh, that's a good question.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it. Okay, I'm looking forward to your discussion on Wade Street Property. Okay, so the Wade Street Properties, one that we had acquired by non-payment sewerries charges. This is also. Uh, property that was on fire. A few months ago, we have attempted to contact the owner and told her about not to get the property cleaned up. Hasn't, we're now the owner of the property. And my suggestion to you would be to issue an RFP for the. Remaining demolition of the property included. To include leaving us the brand that's there. Building it in and then the metal appliances and things like that that we just don't want really to go to the landfill. They can, will become property of the contractor and they can go need money for it. Kind of like a stumpage thing, but it can be as valuable as stumpage. Uh, but we. I took Matt the particular about it, but I don't disagree. There are plenty of places that we want and need granted. On public property, so why would we just forfeit that? So. Um, and then it would be cap conceded and everything else and then we could move through. We built the cost of demolition. Into what's owed on the account. I have a legal opinion that says we can do that. And then we move through the process of releasing it further through the realtor for redemption. And we would be guaranteed to get back what we get back. So I've drafted this. This is based upon what we had for. Four, twelve and fourteen River Road, which is the old behind on the other side of the river back. We did that as David's building in twenty seventeen with a couple tweaks in this. Um, and the goal would be to get this out. I've already got a list of eight or ten local contractors, including ones that submitted proposals. For the last demo job that we did, um, and. Hoping that if I go out real quick, that we can get this back and get this cleaned up and put in order. Also in this, what's different is that waste management is not going to provide cans being hauled to and from. They have too much going on and obviously labor shortage, so that's going to be built into this, so that will elevate the price proportion, disproportionately of the last one. Um, and they will still be, whatever the contractors will not have to pay the disposal of whatever at a building. And the actives doesn't have to be tested or anything like that. Remember that will be used at the start of the list.
So I just looking for a motion to.
Motion to issue.
The request proposal, so that we ensure their request of probable for Wade Street.
Uh, any further discussion? See you none, all in favor? That's everybody. Uh, see, uh, discussion action on new road name. Okay. Yes, yeah, so the, the, this normally wouldn't get the new road name, but we've dealt with this now twice now. Sitcomway, which is out of the airport road, the point of access for residents. Goes in and behind other people. Which would then throw we address based upon the front door. So say it's three fifty vital measurements, you're going to go. To three eighty before you can get to three fifty. So we, this road, this driveway, proposed driveway cuts in and then circles back. It say would be number, well, it's probably going to be three eighteen, but the entry is going to be after three thirty six. So the logical thing is to get in the road. So, uh, the landowner, uh. Said, I think I will need one option to be able to sign with me. I'll be the select one you need to consider. So the request before you is bummed his way, um, it will service just one residence, which would be one better property. One of the properties.
One, oh, yes.
So that's where it is. It's not the traditional method of. A road name application, but. Just throw this simple way. Who would disable it?
No, whether it's an active, anything.
It 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 will. When they use it as a mailing address, if they use.
Well, it, what it was. Was that's what the kid, their kids all call my father. And it was his pit that he started. We were trying to come up, we got, David would like to build a house up there. That overlooks. It's sort of like that little field from the pit. It's going to be right up on the road. There's real no feasible way to bring a driver. There's real no feasible way to bring a driveway up on the road there. We got the entrance to the pit and we just slide up in there and we're gonna move the gate back in the road. Before that's top of the hill, so he doesn't have to be able to add. Then we're just gonna go right up on top of the hill and put him up on the hill there. So that's why Richard said we had where we were coming in off another road, we had to rename it. And the the kids, all of our kids, Shelby came up with the name. She just kept, my father's name is Pumper. Well, I was his pit and we were gonna do D M O pit road, something like that, but a friend of mine said maybe Bumper's Way. You know, for my, you know, Bumper, Bumper's Way, I kind of like, like you said, the property may be a problem, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna replace the sign in two weeks.
I had some, I still got three signs up there that clearly make my feelings known about how huge it should be in my field, but yes, and that's good. I only lost one.
Is it a paucory?
No.
I'm gonna be, I don't think.
Yeah.
I will take a motion.
I approve the new road name of Bumper's Way or Land Road.
Motion second. And that's everybody.
Thanks. Now carry them home.
Okay. Uh, discussion action on donations. Uh, we have received another donation from New Balance, this time it's five hundred dollars from our creation department.
And we'll accept the five hundred dollars in your balance with our creation.
Motion second, leading by the discussion. See you now, all in favor? That's everybody. All right, uh, discussion regarding potential community resilience programs. So this is a great opportunity that we have up to fifty thousand dollars for a project that falls within the guidelines scope of what's in your binder. Uh, also I emailed it to you last week. Uh, my initial inclination was let's just call it fuller on some of these buildings and have somebody else pick or, well, us pay for it, just bring it in pocket. Um, and our consultant now who's paid for by a grant um, that we're paying for, but through the state uh, said, probably don't do that, there's gonna be solar grants coming from municipalities. So find something else, so we can let it go by the wayside and we can then go back through and review some of these priorities, so I'd kind of ask you to take a look at them and see what might have been in interest to you um, so that you can kick them out of the table and maybe organize them.
I'm just looking at this in A one for we getting electric side by side. I need an average. Uh, like electric car, like charging stations, if that's where it's been that we're gonna be.
It's tough, I don't, it's tough, but we're not, and we where do you charge? Current, right, at your home or Santa Cruz, right? I mean, it's pretty limited. Uh, not that I'm, I'm not against it, so to speak, I just how feasible is it, you know what I mean? Does that make it a huge chunk? I mean, if we get electric vehicle to get set up to be able to charge here or at the station, I mean that real possible? I mean, so plausible? I mean, I didn't find that, just because parking is already issued. So then we can take two parking lots and put a Tesla charger behind them, yeah? Hmm, and then who's gonna, you're gonna be able to get charged on it, so now lawyers are sitting over to our parking lot and if you had a municipal car, I say, okay, go put a municipal charger in. But I don't see people using them and they're gonna rush it off and finish charging. They have stock charged to dust up first. It's gonna take a little bit of acid. I I don't see enough of the prevalence
Yeah.
in in around our community, even as a prosperous community, we don't see too many.
The only one I thought was in the last category, the engagement people. H four engage youth and resilience, you know, energy use reduction. Like then do anything for you. Um, and one idea that came to mind, I know there's a new climate justice camp happening this summer. I possibly like sponsor uh, North Rock President to go to for high school students and wouldn't be that much money, but it would be something to just get them involved in those sorts of topics and that sort of thing. I would not, nothing else stood out to me, although I would wonder if like ours um we want we could help our water to check or sewer or other communities, there's a lot about those sorts of things.
What was that engagement people who was age one?
Four. I think it says adopt that complete streets constantly shares the safety bike pedestrians and private. Is that anything we could invest in ways for that to be like like a safe grandad from downtown into the sewer park, would that be a funding source for that? Cause I know that that was supposed to be a million dollar chunk of sidewalk.
And this is fifty thousand.
But I'm just saying, like, i- is it that, is it to make it, or is it like?
What you're saying, I looked it up, cause I had never heard of it, and now it's been in the news a couple times in the last few weeks, but I think what you largely are looking at are more urban areas where they're giving up parking or they're giving up a lane of traffic to then put a bike that doesn't meet the line or a bus that doesn't meet the line and making it uncomfortable for traditional vehicles and encourage ultimate transportation.
I, I mean, I would always was looking for ways to get money, like there's a way for us to do something like her, I mean the one vehicle that kind of fits into this right here and we set that right.
Feels like it's already funded. The vehicle, it sounds like there were other things that they're planning that we need to get creative about, but was it fifty ten or not? No, it was seventy five, expecting fifteen, so I don't know, we could like cover the difference with this money. And then they can offer you that with the vehicle, right? I don't know, to be honest, nothing stood out to me, so I I would be curious if there are departments that we could share this with, like, oh, like
Yeah, so it's.
What's to up to you? Uh, you've got.
Nothing exciting. When they took away that, it's like, okay, well, you could look at like a pickup truck or something, right? That was electric, but then we have to pay to electrify.
Maintain it.
And maintain it, right?
Pay to gas up and maintain anything.
Right.
Otherwise.
Right, but anyway, so that's something that could theoretically be considered on a trial basis with some of the fire department. They're looking for a vehicle like that, and I think they would not just speak out of order, but consider accepting a electric vehicle.
Started doing for good. The trouble with with fire service and electric vehicles, they have to go when they have to go.
But a pickup truck might cut other areas in the department and not have to not.
If it was a a non-emergency use vehicle, right, perhaps, right? So all the vehicles we have are emergency.
Always ready to just go drive, like it's like you didn't gas up your truck, that can't go here, right?
Nothing.
You're supposed to be charged.
How how many hours are you gonna be gone when you leave? We went to the the Grandstand Fire in Skowloon, you can come home for twenty four hours. Right, we went to twelve or more hours in Belgrade Woodsfire, I mean, you don't you can't stop, of course you do, they pump water, they do.
I think, I think it becomes out on our, it's used, like I was saying, you know.
It would have to be something completely non-legal.
Right.
That came up was the the day of the flood, was it, when they shut down the roads? And I remember someone making a comment that like some people out of the kindness of their parts use their personal vehicles to like transport signs and stuff to block off roads. Would it be beneficial if we had a town vehicle for things like that, so that we're not putting people in positions to be like liable if anything happened?
I don't, I don't wanna get in the merits of debate in twenty weeks, but I think it's worth putting on a list and letting the officers weigh it up, and then, you know, if they were willing to give fifty thousand, let's see. And they they could say no, and then, I guess, some people have that. And if they're not, be on the list in five years.
So we aren't signing tonight, we're just making a list.
We're gonna get a list to get started.
Would you write down each one?
I did. Yeah. So the ones that I had.
Over left.
Why, I mean, nothing's exciting, but uh, strategy E, environmental protection. Create or update the water shed plan to identify flooding and water quality priorities. That's the three. I know the water district's talking about this, I don't know if they'd be an eligible entity implied anyway, but implement a source water protection program, talk about wellhead protection and things like that. Um, so that's something there that wouldn't directly affect town operations, but affects the town, yeah. Um, identify and protect open space in the flood plain to increase flood buffers in community resilience. And that can be very controversial, but it's something that we've heard more and more lately since the December floods, about people getting public dollars to rebuild in high-risk locations. And this will kind of, I think, conduct a study to say, okay, you really need to think about policy in allowing development in these areas, because it's been a speed and change decision. Next page, F is a community vulnerability assessment that identifies climate risks and vulnerable populations. Uh, includes a review of existing plans and policies adopted, climate resilience plan that describes your high priority strategies for reducing risk and vulnerabilities. Standalone plan or comprehensive plan? And I think that isn't what we wanna do, but we wanna do some of that in terms of what are our vulnerabilities of the community, how do you respond and where do your populations?
Yeah, I agree, it was the climate risk that like threw me off.
Frame it as what you want to, apply weather patterns and everything that we're having to deal with and pay for. It's why I ended up on these pages highlighting this stuff.
Yeah, F seven is the only place where you go.
Yeah, okay, well, look, I'm getting there. F seven, I have no real clue about it, we're class ten, which means zero, but if you get a class nine, it's a five percent discount from flood insurance fees. You can work your way up to forty five percent. More than, but the town in Orange Rock voted back in someday. They didn't want to participate because of zoning. And zoning is a part of the strict one. It it's it's gonna, it's a multifaceted thing, but pretty much it's, if you get flooded up, you don't rebuild and that's gonna be a part of the order. Uh, it's really, really strict. Skowloon only has this class nine for the five percent. There are a few communities that have the full forty five percent down there, but I think it's definitely something worth looking into. Obviously, that's something, it's a broad impact.
Yeah, and anyone who took money from the little stand-up payment thing, make sure you know you're gonna be getting those rates now for a bit like your mortgage.
And then the next one, uh, eight is a six or better, and that is the maximum savings, you get a class six, five, three, two, or one. That's forty five percent. But a lot of that has to do with zoning and what the community is willing to absorb in order to get to those end needs, obviously. You're gonna get the benefit as a homeowner, but off your experience ratio, right? Uh, it's gonna improve in the area. I know my home was, when I'm probably thirty percent, I'm like, I don't have a claim and I don't. Well, your zip code has a high level of claims, well, it's the weather, I mean, whether the builders protect or not, they look at the experience or any of the of the area and effects of something. Uh, being a responsible, they run caring insurance, and even if you don't file claims on it, it's most responsible and everybody did the benefit. But those are the ones I had in terms of the climate and stuff, which is really what they're looking for, that's how the money gets freed up. Um, but we could just ignore the fact that we are impacted by that. And forget about climate change or any of the political buttons. We have blood on a regular basis now, so if you have any other projects that you want to include now or later, let me know. And I'll go do this with our consultant, see, and she'll probably end up coming up to talk to us about it. Anything you're opposed to? So that's it, my answer. Okay, what else? Um, other businesses, does the board have any other business? Did you match up with other business?
I did.
And the plan to move the agenda? Yeah, I know that we moved the municipal plan to be the commonest to the agenda for today.
Motion second, any further discussion? See now, all in favor? That's everybody. This is unsolicited redemption for tax-acquired property. Uh, so this is with the emotion to release tax-acquired property one twenty one Borough Hill Road map twenty one three dash eight Gloria Marshall. For all past taxes fees.
So.
Second, uh, any further discussion on that? See now, all in favor? That's everybody. Though we got other business.
Right side more when I got some photos.
More data.
I'm adding to the agenda.
Second, any discussion? See now, all in favor? Everybody, so this weather on the agenda, it fell by the wayside, but looking at my planner it went out at the next meeting last year. We're also ahead of schedule this year. And we're gonna probably get caught on it. So I know that, I don't wanna get into it, but last year there was obviously an issue with this, Senator, proposals, things like that, so I added, this is pretty much the same, and I found it in it right there. Um, is last year I added Upper Main Street, which wasn't in there last year, but it was taken care of, if you will. Um, and then I updated the dates, all except for the first paragraph, but looks that um, as you remember last year, yeah, I am probably not, but um the, we had issues in terms of performance versus what we asked for, and because of the price of uh, what was offered, it didn't meet our performance standards and it just became a huge mess, so.
I think that's the message.
But anyway, with that being said, if you're comfortable with it, I would recommend issuing this request for proposals to get it out there now and then have questions due by the seventeenth of April, which we inevitably have questions on these regardless, close on the twenty fifth, and then you would address this the first meeting in May. Uh, which is May first, which is again two weeks earlier than we did last year. And if you don't wanna make a decision on the first meeting, pun, that's included in this too.
But I knew that would be for the new roadside model, request for proposals out now.
Motion second, any discussion? See now, all in favor? That's everybody. The only
I do have another business, but you were done.
Okay, the only other thing I had, I probably should have included in my report, was um, the new code enforcement officer is training, you know, I haven't seen him very much, position's creating, we've been training today for plumbing inspectors, been studying for the plumbing test already, which is crazy. Uh, so things are encouraging there, uh, but I've been picking up some things on the other side, so that he can focus on certifications. Um, so I've been sending an absurd amount of junkyard and litter violations. So that's done already. So uh, the board did receive a complaint on the Wood Hill Road property, it's been on the books forever. But I think we've cleaned up three in the last two weeks, which is good. I'm just sending a four letter from the attorney certified mail. Um, and we're seem to be getting responses, so um, that's good there, but the junkyard tracker is something that um Matt knows, Max in the boat was once knows that it's gonna be a part of the routine once a month that we're looking at through notes and whatnot, so honestly encouraging there, and I do appreciate the folks that are calling and touching base and moving the needle on cleaning up. Or just doing it, which is also really nice, so. That was it.
Um, I know that in the town manager report, the part with the private department doing the thing with American Red Cross on April twentieth, they need volunteers, you know, the nature of that volunteer thing.
So the nature of it is gonna be, it's educational installation, so obviously they're not gonna give you that free smoke detector, they're gonna wanna talk to other important smoke detectors, smoke detector maintenance.
Yeah.
Um, honestly, if you're interested, you can email me or email Todd or call the firehouse, and they'll put you on a list. I mean, Red Cross is filling with volunteers that aren't firefighters. But it's being sponsored by, supported by some fire department.
Yeah, we'll have people on hand to assist in whatever ways needed, including uh, installation, we it's not publicized particularly well, will be now, but um we carry new smoke detectors on our tangent. Uh, and and give them away and put them in, install that as needed. It's probably no more than two or three a year. But um, if we find ourselves in a situation where there should be one, it isn't. We make an offer and we've we've been you know, two or three a year, yeah, yeah, we'll take care of that right now for you, okay? And we do it, we have tools on the truck, we do it before we leave. So it's not um that different from what we've been doing right along, it's just a little bit more publicized.
And this program not gonna sell, it's not like you just give one and you have to listen to their spiel. Build them in and put eight in your house, if that's what your house is supposed to have by recommendation. So one in every bedroom, one on every floor, one here, one there. Kind of an opportunity for people that don't have a room anymore.
The school resource officer, the second one they put on here we go, this is fifty four hours now, I don't know, I mean uh, this is your North Rock, that was because it's canon, any feedback that you guys are getting, we'll let you know, it's one of the sheriff's office. Um, it's a great guy. Just anything that, just all of it, so, but it's just like, anything with innovation?
Yeah, I actually had to share it yesterday. For different reasons, but. For different reasons, but. We had the opportunity to meet him at the elections on the Monday and Tuesday, and he's around, the kids are really enjoying him. He was easy to talk to, sat and visited with us, one of the one of our names were. Um, and I hear that, and I had. All people saw, two people that said, who are paying that one from school is scouting something, they just do. Um, so anyway, I think it's a positive thing. It's a really recent.
Is it somebody new, Ronnie, or?
Uh, you know, he's been around a lot. He's retired in Massachusetts. Uh, they got him retired young. Uh, in regard to the case, moved up here. Uh, they've been here, gosh, for. Ten plus years. Um, he's done, of course, carried for us, he goes to our search warrants. Uh, so, so he's done a bunch of different things. He's very. Personalable, easy to talk to, and he was a school resource officer in Massachusetts, um, to get the experience for it, um. And he, he told his daughter, actually, one student in his office. Uh, his wife is, um, she teaches. Scaring, uh, two programs all over, you know, even. Yeah, the college.
Okay.
Coffee programs, things, so she's. She's a. High school teacher, colleges, and maybe even some of the pros that were there, she doesn't know that she's a.
I have a contact information, if you want.
Yeah, if you would, send it to me. I haven't, that's a person yet.
People not parking the fire lanes and other, which certain places have, but no, it's free now. You see, that's our parking spot. Now you've already done that and parked there, then someone parked next to you, maybe say, hey, make good choices. That would be fantastic. I mean, he's, he was already pumping today, like move traffic along in the, in the. Where you're just supposed to, I for when people stop and get out of the farm, I'll get it. You can tell them like, cut a crap and make the choices. That would be amazing. Yes.
Oh, okay, unless the board has anything else, uh, we'll go into executive session.
I think, what was that about that? Upper Main Street, we, we reapply, I think, this last thing we talked about. We got some money you would put together or something?
The last thing for Upper Main Street that I just talked about was roadside mowing.
No, what you was talking about.
The big bomb?
No, no, no. You're talking about. Think it was some of that federal money or something. And the last thing you talked about.
Can I?
Yeah, just two minutes ago.
You say another fifteen minutes ago, but you don't.
The last thing I said about Upper Main Street was that I add them to the roadside mow contract, which we didn't have in there last year with the contract. It's only for second, but. Okay, uh, right on. Uh, so moving forward, uh, we'll go to executive session for all those numbers and initials and, uh, to discuss town manager programs. My motion.
So I should be going to a, with an exception.
Motion second, any further discussion? See none, all in favor? I don't anticipate there being a motion, so at this point I haven't been filed.